All right, I'd like to open up this planning board meeting for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Seven o'clock on our agenda tonight is the first thing, administrative report, the town planning board.
Sure, sure. Just to bring you guys up to speed with the goings on lately. I've been working on all the other requisite research that I mentioned before, notably with comparative by law analysis as well as subdivision regulation updates that has kind of been an ongoing topic. Additionally, I have a both a call and likely a meetup with Mr. Rob Freeswick of Michoacan Regional School District tomorrow morning to go over any potential green communities grant grant request likely to cover for anything related to air conditioning or heating in the two other schools that kind of it remains a pointed issue within their budget. Given that I just submitted the Green Communities Annual Report, gosh, going on five weeks ago, I want to say, it's already been accepted by the Green Communities Department and we're still we remain in good standing to apply for further grant funds. So really, I'm going to be looking to that towards that meeting with robbery Freeswick to go over his potential projects, see what is eligible, see what applies, see what doesn't apply, sift through the wants and the needs. And after that, we'll assemble a grant application to be submitted likely for the fall round. Aside from that, that's been taking a I won't say an inordinate amount of my time, but it's been taking a lot of the spare bandwidth I've got. Aside from that, that's all the movement that's really occurred in the past two weeks regarding that. However, also, I've been in kind of constant communication with Mitch, at least one sided communication with Mitch. I've yet to hear back from him. I'll be able to kind of expound on that later when it gets to the relevant relevant hearing. But aside from that, that's been what's taking up the lion's share of my time.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the town planners report.
I'll second that motion.
Ball in favor?
Todd, I think you're muted.
And that'll show me. Thank you. We can just simply do an all in favor of the above motion.
Hi.
Yeah, say a voice a voice vote is fine for that. This isn't anything out.
Yeah, I don't think it's delivered a short report. We don't need.
Yeah, it's yeah, we don't need overly formalized it turned into.
All right, all right.
But I just I think a high five and a thumbs up is good enough for that kind of thing.
All right. So the first item is special permit hearing. On the cultivation of six oh one Furbert State, Ashby Mass. And we are moving this, Todd?
Yes, the applicant I would remind you is is a United Cultivation of six oh one Pittsburgh State Road in Ashby. What was previously discussed is to open the hearing and then immediately continue with no deliberation or discussion. So that way, this particular item will go before a board that sits at full strength rather than have a missing members and have to like catch up and bringing people up to speed and whatnot.
Right, so I need to make a motion to.
To continue, you have to open the hearing and then yeah, then move make the motion to continue.
All right, let's open the hearing and then I'd like to make a motion to continue deliberation.
Mr. Chair, could I could I ask a question?
Okay.
My name is Greg Roy with Dulson Roy. I'm representing the applicant, United Cultivation. Actually, Mike Spengler with United Cultivation is here as well. Do I understand the issue is that you you are short a five, a full force, five member quorum this evening?
Yes.
Do you have four members or do you have three members?
We have four.
We have four. With the associate member, we have four.
With the associate member, you have four. Does the town of Bolton invoke the Mullins rule relative to members that miss a a meeting and that and they can be brought up to speed if they?
Yes, we have adopted that. We have adopted the Mullins provision.
So. Could we proceed forward this evening with the Mullins rule and have a full force board in in, you know, in the in the next couple of weeks? Or what do you advise on that?
I would advise. Well, the chairman has expressed as he was aware that he would be missing this meeting, he expressed a desire to see the presentation of the applicant here. And also just to keep the administrative aspect of this clean and not have to deal with the most provisions and play catch up. It was preferred by by the chair at the at the time to have this presentation by you guys before a full force board of five rather than have to play four plus one at a later date.
Okay. All right, I guess I just wanted to say, I I know you haven't opened the public hearing yet, so this is this is a little bit of a freebie and it's just not testimony, but I guess I just wanted to say that we're prepared to get testimony tonight, but if the board and the town feels that it's better to wait, I guess we're okay with that. It's just that we want to make sure we're we're staying on top of our timeframes. You know, the the applicant's pretty anxious to get to get rolling over there. So I certainly don't want to put the, you know, the board in a position where they feel like they're at a a disadvantage, you know, and 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 aren't going to get a fair shake and understanding our hearing and hearing us. But I guess we would hope that the expectation, I guess, on our part would be that we would be ready to go in a couple of weeks as far as work consumption, we're ready to go tonight. So I guess I'll just I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, Todd, I just have a brief question. Do you have any idea when we can resume this, given that this is rescheduled already once?
Yes, this would be two weeks from today, exactly this exact time, this exact place. I'll be in communication with you, Mr. Spengler, to make sure that you have a copy of the most recent agenda and you have all the information you need to be able to enter the Zoom here.
Is there any need to reissue public notice on our behalf or anything?
No, no, provided we open the hearing today and immediately move to continue it with no discussion or deliberation, it'll immediately be forwarded up two weeks, fourteen days hence from today. And from that, you'll meeting your meeting, your hearing will have opened today in terms of timeline, and then you'll be the board will be receiving all the deliberations two weeks hence.
Okay, sir. That sounds that sounds okay. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Todd, is there is there like some of the opening of the hearing? Is there a duration that would have to have it closed by?
No, there is not. Once it's open. So the way it works for special permits is they have sixty-five days after receipt of the application to be scheduled for hearing. Now that hearing being opened, after that duration of that hearing could be open for really an indeterminate amount of time, but after that deliberation has ended, you have to make a motion to act or you have to act upon that within ninety-five days. Thereafter, they have to receive a copy of that decision, whether it was approved, approved with conditions or denied. I don't see anything. We haven't even that's way farther down the pike, but the the public hearing can be open for an indeterminate indeterminate amount of time.
I mean, I I sorry, I I mean, I would say if we had, you know, I know you can see we have a couple of new members, a new chairman, well, a vice chairman. So just to make sure we have the experience on the board, I think, and so we're not like repeating questions and we don't kind of have a wasted meeting. I think it would be good to have Bob and and Mike here, I think, as as long as the applicant, I I mean, you guys are okay, you know, okay with that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We don't want to give anybody the we we recognize that we want a full board here. We understand it's a it's a special permit. We do need four or five of you. I guess I would ask that if if it's possible to to the extent that it's possible, if if individual members have a chance to review what we've submitted in the next few weeks or even have reviewed it already and have questions that they may perhaps could transmit transmit to us through your planner in advance of the next meeting, then we could come prepared to answer those and try to expedite the process as much as we could. So we're happy to work with the board. If that's possible, if not, we're we're certainly happy to just just roll with with the two week continuation, but we're we would love the chance to sort of hear any initial thoughts that the members had if there's any if there's an opportunity to do that and we're happy to to proceed in that manner, but we'll we'll take you we'll take your lead on this. We understand the.
Yeah, to the vice chair. I'm so sorry to interrupt to the vice chair, if any.
I'm sorry, what's that sound?
I say, I was just asking through the vice chair. I have just to let both Greg Roy as well as Mr. Spengler know I have shared their application materials with all the members of the board. It's also on the current projects tab of the planning board, current projects list and will let ten side. So they have had the ability to both review and and kind of marinate on this project. Gosh, for the past almost three weeks now. So rest assured that that has been made available to them. I've also reminded them of the links. Aside from that, I would like to avoid any further deliberation. So if we could, if we could open the hearing and then move to continue, that would be the most that'd be the best path for.
All right, so I have to open up the hearing for a special permit.
Rexer, so you just open up the hearing, which you already you just do that by a voice. And then after that, then you make the motion to continue two weeks hence to the twentieth.
All right, I would like to make a motion to continue the special hearing to the twentieth, June twentieth.
Okay, I'll begin roll call vote. I'll begin with Vice Chair Jim Barr.
Hi.
Let's see, Bob Romer.
Hi.
Eric Nayland.
Hi.
See, Austin Grenner.
Hi.
With that, four out of five present motion carries. We will see you good folks two weeks from today on the twenty eighth around seven o'clock.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much, everyone. Take care.
All right, so now we're we're good with that.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on to the second item, the continuing scenic road shade tree hearing. Ryan Proctor, Dillis Moyes, Solid Design Group. Do we have anybody on here to open this up?
Believe Ryan, yeah, Ryan is present.
Cameras closed. Howdy. All right, good evening, everyone. Ryan Proctor from Dillis and Roy, I'm representing the applicant Mohammed Al Hassan, who is on this call with us tonight. Todd, if I may share my screen.
Yes, give me one quick second so I can allow that.
Hey, Todd, for the sake of Austin and Austin and Mike, yeah, sorry. Could you just go over a quick summary of where we're at with this project?
So very, very briefly, so there's a list of roads here within the town of Bolton. There's a little over two dozen of them that have been designated and adopted as scenic roads by the townsfolk, by the voters of the town of Bolton. In order to the whole objective of a scenic road provision is to provide preservation, like a preserving element and keeping that bucolic tree filled and stone wall that knewing the nature that that is so Bolton. In order to where we're at here is if anyone would like to do some building alongside either of these scenic roads, that involves either tree clearing or destruction or removal or reconstruction of stone walls or famous New England stone walls. Before that can happen, they need to they need to file with the the planning board and then go over the available options for mitigating the impact and that would deteriorate and detract from the scenic quality of these roads. So it's it's there to minimize the impact and minimize the tree clearing and the degradation of that scenic quality. So these these hearings here, they're not they don't have a permissions angle in the strictest sense where you can't deny someone from building something or plopping a subdivision in because that's a state level statute. Basic federalism says local provisions can't boss around state provisions. However, it's designed to work hand in glove with an effort to minimize and detract from any damage that could arise towards that bucolic aspect of town. So that's effectively where we're at here. We're here. The objective of this hearing is to minimize and mitigate the amount of trees that are taken down or reduce the amount of linear footage of stone walls that would either be, as I mentioned before, deconstructed, removed, or whichever else. Okay, that's I think the the briefest way I can explain what.
Well, and this project in specific where where we left off was they had a drainage stormwater structure built in the town right away. And with the Board of Selectmen basically said that they weren't going to approve that.
Yes.
Because basically they would need the town's approval for permission for for doing that. So I think.
It's exactly right. Yeah, I can I can take it from there. So basically, the Board of Selectmen, the three, the the entire board, they act as the day to day executive body and decision making body of the town. And the body that's tasked with granting or denying permission of anything infrastructure related that's privately owned within a town way, basically within the town takings on either side of the street. The only the only body that can grant or deny that permission is the Board of Selectmen. So in the previous iteration of one of the plans that that this applicant's come before, they then they were hoping to have or projected to have a bit of private drainage infrastructure that would reside in one of those one of the town takings on the side of the street. They went before the Board of Selectmen. They were not granted that permission. So now they have to come to a different engineering solution and amelioration to the problem. And they've been going over different permutations. That's kind of the best. It's kind of the best stuff to do.
All right, and now we're at today.
Yeah, got it. So one one quick question is what's the role of the planning board in this iterative process? So it seems as if the initial application was was over was, I guess, overseed by by the Board of Selectmen, but what about the planning board here?
So.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say, we have to prove, we have to approve the the removal of trees, allow basically approve that they're going to remove whatever trees because of the scenic road and also whatever destruction and restoration of the rock walls.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So effectively, we're here, they're in the sense of they're seeking consent effectively. So they're looking to demonstrate and display what what their best approach is that could that could alleviate the noted problems and minimizing that of tree degradation and stone wall degradation. And that plan needs to be given a thumbs up by majority of the board.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Sure. All right. Sorry about that. Sorry, go ahead.
Don't be sorry at all. I appreciate the appreciate that. I will share my screen. So as was just noted, we had left off and we did have two structures that were catch basins within the right away. We've since removed those and we have provided a grass whale on the side of the driveway. We've super elevated it particularly on this bottom section dumping into sort of a strip of angular riprap which will ultimately discharge into the grass whale alongside Meadow Road, which is existing along the road. Now we're just providing some regrading of it so that we can provide the capture of the storm water coming down the side of the road. We did have an informal meeting at Town Hall a little over a month ago, I believe, with DP with Randy from DPW. Bob Romer was there. Mark Case was there as well. And we did present this plan. Removing those structures and going with those lower impact, if you will, on the side of the driveway to get the storm water around there. With respect to trees and stone stone wall removal, we're still at what was previously or what was lastly presented at the meeting, which is there were eighteen total trees and about forty feet of stone retaining wall, existing wall that were to be removed. So that has remained unchanged even with these drainage improvements. Subsequent to that, there was a meeting last week. I was not present. I was I was away on vacation. But there was a meeting with National Grid and and this falls more towards when we filed the driveway permit application itself, not the scenic road, which will be a separate is a separate approval from your board. But there was discussion about getting electric to the site. And National Grid did stake utility pole adjacent to the this proposed driveway here, which would not require any additional tree removal than what's shown here for this project on on this plan. So that's where we're at now. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. No.
Can you remind me? What to the right of the driveway, I guess, looking in this orientation?
Yep.
All those trees, is that just basically the regrading of the hill there? Why those trees need to be removed?
So the these ones, these two six inch trees and then this cluster right here, yeah, yeah, needs to be removed. So those those were shown as part of the previous plan.
Oh, okay.
But those are those are well outside the grading limits. Those are not.
Oh, okay.
Not supposed to be removed. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a there's a few one inch trees, I think, that were captured in our in our survey at the site also that are in here. So it it looks very dense on the plan, but we we just have the eighteen.
So is that?
Ryan, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is that updated somewhere?
So we have, when we filed for the driveway permit application, there is a separate plan for that approval process that does have does have that scheduled trees updated. So that'll be something that the planning board sees after as well.
Okay.
So they add to the interest and complexity of this little issue. Part of the conversation with National Grid last week was in order to get electricity into this site potentially two sites further down, it would be necessary after a great deal of discussion, put another pole on the south side of the road further down and actually in the wetlands behind the guard rail. And then put a a guy wire down into the wetlands aimed perpendicular to the road. And the reason for that is to take the load from the pole that is and it's not in this drawing further down the road on the north side. Yeah, it's actually a little further down, quite a bit further down.
This pole right here, Bob.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and we initially wanted to take run a ask National Grid to run a line from there all the way to the pole that's been just described beside the driveway. That would have required to put a guy wire down to pretty much the north slightly to the west. And that would have required an easement from Scott Slater on his property. We met with Scott and he flat out denied it, you know, absolutely no further discussion. Consequently, that option was out. At that point, the suggestion Javier's suggestion, and he was the the National Grid site person was the only alternative now was to drop a pole into the wetlands, run a cable from the existing pole, not the one on adjacent to Slater's land, Scott Slater's land, and then run a line from the pole in the wetlands to the pole that has just been described at the corner of the driveway. Two issues immediately come up. One is that would require the removal of three more trees adjacent to the wetland where that pole would go in. It would require approval by a conservation commission to put that pole in into a wetlands. I mentioned it to our conservation agent. She said, well, you know, we would consider that, but DEP may have a significant problem with actually putting something into the wetlands. Not sure where that stands. But the bottom line was that the owners of the lots involved would ask for another work order from National Grid and they would immediately apply for a tree hearing and approval, at least conceptually by the Conservation Commission to put a pole in that wetlands with a guy wire about ten feet away from the pole. So we have an additional sticky wicket here. It would have been so much simpler if Scott Slater had agreed to move that existing brace guy wire rather onto an easement on his land, but that's where it stands now. And I have not heard, Todd, I don't know whether you've heard, I haven't heard anything back.
Neither have I, sir.
Conservation, National Grid or anything that's been applied for with a selectman, the selectman would be responsible for a poll hearing because again, the poll is in the town taking.
To your to your question, sir, I haven't received word from any of those bodies yet. Or Mr. Slater.
So we have a situation now where making some sort of decision on the tree removal in order to accommodate the driveway. And I believe based on the meeting two weeks ago, we pretty much had agreement that that was about the only alternative. And the the layout that's been shown here is, I believe, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, what had been presented in that meeting and we pretty much agreed to.
This was a plan that was submitted at at the Town Hall meeting. You're correct.
Right.
Yep.
So at this point, you can continue. I'm I'm sorry that you we could just make a decision on a tree hearing for the driveway. But that kind of makes the whole situation academic as we deal with the situation with National Grid to put power into the lots.
Of course. But the the confines of this particular hearing are, at this point, I agree largely academic, but it's kind of outside the scope of this particular scenic road.
So in view of the inevitable subsequent, I hate to say this, poll hearing from the selectman, Conservation Commission, notice of intent and order of conditions and agreement by them for putting a pole and a guy into the wetlands in terms, that's going to be an additional shade tree hearing, wetlands hearing in addition to what we're discussing here. Just for the sake of transparency here. So I guess the question, the simple question at this point is, with this inevitability before us, should we make a decision on this, understanding that that decision is going to be impacted subsequently by an additional tree hearing down the road? I have frankly no idea. Although I was told that there wouldn't be additional trees taken down in order to put that line in. But looking at the site, talking to National Grid, my feeling is, other than the ones immediately adjacent to the proposed new pole, there would not be additional removal of trees.
So Bob, are you saying that this inventory of proposed tree removal that I got off the website? I hate to say this, I'm I'm a little confused about this whole thing now because we're talking about poles and wetlands and.
That that I mean, that I mean, Bob's bringing it up because that's going to be something subsequent.
That's this is for information. I mean, this is not part of this. Now, I just want to give people context for the conversation.
Okay.
This is not part of this hearing per se.
Okay. Right.
I mean.
I mean.
Go ahead, James.
Do we just make a motion to continue the conversation?
Well.
I mean.
I mean theoretically. Theoretically.
Because I'm not seeing I'm not seeing anything about. I'm going by what was on the agenda for today for tonight, and it's true removal not.
I mean, can I mean, I mean, sure, we can continue and continue, but like I don't know that, I mean, the scope of this hearing is what we're looking at.
Exactly.
So I don't know that we can continue for that.
I wouldn't, I, you know, within the scope of this hearing and what we're addressed with and how much conversation we've had over many months about specifically the driveway, the issue about building drainage structures on the town taking. I believe at this point, all of those issues have been resolved. And we've come up with frankly, the optimal way of dealing with access to the lot, having looked at many alternatives. And in the within the scope. And in, within the scope of this hearing. My recommendation would be that we go ahead and make a decision on this particular scope. Again, in the background is, we will revisit. Issues, uh you know, with respect to this lot and. Service of electricity and polls at a later date. I don't know when that will happen.
Yes, can I, can I ask a, can I ask a technical, technical question?
Sure.
Um, so the stormwater flow, I mean, originally you had a whole basin, now you have this. Rock uh collection area. Um, is it the same, it covers the same amount of flow or you, you're making use of the swell that's already. That's already there. I know you said you were making use of that. Um.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any chance of, you know, the swell being impacted and having it flow out onto the road? I mean. Like, I don't know, tech, I guess if you could speak on the test, technical aspects of the two designs.
Yeah, so you are do that. Yeah, I'm happy to. Um the, the catch basins that were proposed at the end of the driveway were. Catching the large, the small portion of pavement, um basically from where my cursor is down. Um so not a very large portion of pavement, and that was just directing it towards um the swell that we're modifying, the existing swell. Upgrading, we do have additional stormwater controls. We have an actual basin that's entirely on the private property. Um some additional rip rap, um spillways, another, another nilo pass drop in. Uh grade to capture some of that stormwater from the up gradient, uh stormwater runoff. So by super elevating the driveway on the lower portion. Um into this rip rap, which will help slow velocity of the stormwater running off there. Um and the grading that we do have from the driveway over. Um the, the plan is the stormwater will make its way down into that uh regraded swell. Uh on that side of the driveway.
And that swells in the public uh way, or is it on your property or?
Um. There's a portion of grass well on the side of the driveway, and then we do do, there is some grading. Um and then just a little bit of rip rap here at the downfall, but this portion of the swell here is, it's on public property, but it's existing. This was something that Randy had.
Okay.
Um suggested doing some modifications too.
Okay, so, yeah, so Randy's, Randy's good with this design?
He's been at all the meetings. He, um Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we did kind of reach an agreement at the end of the last meeting when we were at town hall. Um relative to this design, and she, and Randy will have another look at this uh when we actually do the driveway application as well, so.
It's the best solution of a tough situation, I think. That's the way we came.
I mean, sorry for the questions. I'm just out of the loop on those.
No, don't be sorry, so, yeah.
And it's a very big loop.
Yeah, and just to make sure that we're thinking quite critically and keeping within the scope of this particular hearing. This, the, the objective of this hearing is to find the least deleterious and least impactful. Degradation of the scenic quality of this particular roadway. Um so I don't want to get too far out of the scope because I want to make sure we're actually working on what's deliberated.
So the, the rocks that you're removing, have you been on resituating them on the site somehow, like going up the driveway or?
Uh we don't have those shown, but we're, um we're happy to uh consider that if we can reuse them on site, then absolutely, yeah, we, we want to do that.
I think that's typically what we ask for, if you could.
Okay.
Not remove them from the site and somehow add to the wall or. You know, something like that.
Yeah, ab- absolutely.
I have no more questions.
Yeah.
You know, we ready to make a motion to approve this, sir?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the motion to grant consent for the, of the proposal here.
Alright, I would um like to make a motion to. Grant consent. To.
To the proposed uh plan set of proposed scope of work.
The proposed. Work. That works.
That works, my friend.
Can I ask a quick um question about? The trees that are shown currently on the planning board website in the agenda, are those in fact still accurate?
Um those are, were the original, Bob. There are four less. I. Believe I sent a cover letter to the board on January, I have in front of me. I sent it on uh Jan, dated January ninth, that has an updated list of those trees. Uh those eighteen trees that we're removing.
Okay, so I think the. Motion needs to be amended to reflect that.
Okay, I'm happy to read them off or um. Yes, pull it up on the screen or wha- whatever would be helpful.
Well, um so what's, what's, what's the situation with signing this off? Is, is it the chairman is signing it off or is it Todd?
Yeah, it's, it's just granting consent. The chairman can do that.
Oh, um, yeah, so I guess. There'll be like a, will you send out a draft of the document, I guess?
Uh yeah, I'll have to take a look and see what I have, but yeah, I can draft a, I can send a, a draft over.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, or you can choose to empower any other member of the board, like the vice chair to, to be the endorsing party. That would work fine. Given that the actual chair is not present.
Okay, what I would suggest at this point is that, I hate to go through this, but Ryan, if you have the list, could you? Can we simply have a motion that reflects the removal of trees? That are currently identified in the website is modified by your list tonight. Of the trees that you are proposing as the scope of tree removal for this particular hearing, at which point we can. Say verily, we agree with that motion, vote on it, and it's over. How's that?
You could just send that to me when you find it for a moment.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll do that right now.
Thank you, sir. I, again, I don't have access to my uh town email address, thankfully, because of the storm, but I'll be sure to take care of that first thing in the morning.
Sounds good.
Okay, is that considered to be a motion? And if so, may I have a second?
A second. You're good. I'll begin a roll call vote. I'll begin with uh vice chair James Barr.
Bye.
Austin Grenner.
Hi.
Eric Nayland.
Hi.
And Robert Rennet.
Hi.
With a majority, uh four out of five voting, uh motion passes.
Thanks, Ryan. It's been a long journey.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not, I'm not quite out of the woods yet, but I appreciate your time.
I know, but at least.
It's been, it's a bit of a slog, but this is one more step forward.
Yep, absolutely.
Out of the woods into the bog.
That's right.
I was gonna say, that is a terrible pun, and I love it.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, take care.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Yep, take care, Paul.
Alright, ready to move forward?
Aye, sir.
Alright, third item, continued definitive subdivision plan, family and open space. Plan residential development force board, Daniel Mothr of Miami, Florida. Special permit for property identified on Bolton's map two C as possible twenty-three, located on South Bolton. In Bolton's residential zoning district.
Okay, um just to provide a bit of an update, I have been reaching out to uh niche engineering routinely over the past two weeks, and I have yet to, to have any. Uh deliverable from them yet. Um so as soon as they have completed their peer review, I'll be able to provide. More updates, but as of right now, they haven't, don't have anything ready for me just yet.
Alright, so do I need to make a motion to move it to the next planning board meeting?
Aye, sir, aye, sir.
Alright, I'd um make a motion to move um. Again, the um. Definitive subdivision plan, family and an open space, the next planning board meeting scheduled, scheduled on.
Twenty-eight, that's right.
Oh, second.
Sure, good. I'll begin a roll call vote. I'll begin with vice chair James Barr.
Bye.
Austin Grenner.
Hi.
Eric Nayland.
Hi.
And Robert Rennet.
Alright.
Very good, and with that, we will see you fine folks two weeks hence. Thank you.
Todd, can you check? And see what the ETA is of um peer review comments? I think I need to. Break our peer reviewer.
Yeah, I've been, I've been in regular one, I'll be at one sided contact with uh with niche engineering for the past. Got a little over two weeks now, because I reached out to them two weeks ago, um and they haven't had anything yet. But I'll continue poking them with a relatively sharp stick, and I hope that we can get something from them.
So what, what's, I mean, what's holding, I mean, when we used to have Fred Hamway. Yeah, I mean, it was a great working relationship. He'd be at all the meetings, he'd talk through his review. Um it's, he almost seemed like a member of the planning board, basically. Uh niche doesn't seem very interested. I mean, like, are we tied to them somehow, or we look at other?
We can, we can retain um different peer reviews, we can. We're not under contract with them. Unlike some other municipalities I've worked with, we're actually, we're kind of chained to our peer review firm. Um it's not like that here. We can find one, provided we can source one that's relatively local and responsive. Um I have been looking at others. Um I've made, I put out some feelers along, alongside my planning colleagues within the discipline, seeing who else they can recommend. And they've worked well with that have been responsive, um but it hasn't really, uh nothing's really risen to the top yet. Uh but I'll continue pushing that forward over the next, gosh, probably three or four days.
Well, if you can have a heart to heart talk with niche and explain that we've gotten to the point where that is where we're going. Uh maybe that'll help them get off the dime and get going.
Agreed, provided actually, I can actually have a conversation, be it heart to heart or no. That's been really the trick. They haven't been all that responsive, both by phone and by email. So I'll continue pushing.
Because really, I mean, Fred Hamway was, we were in person, he was there at every meeting, in the front row, talking through every single issue. Um he had a personal relationship with all the, with all the projects, so it's like, it's a completely different atmosphere dealing with them, you know.
Hmm, and what was the reason we moved on from?
Well, Fred retired, he retired.
Okay.
Shame.
But at the moment, niche is. Doing other work for us, it's not.
Yeah.
You know, so. I think they need to understand what the implications are of poor performance.
Yeah, agreed.
Well, is it something that we have to adjust to now, now that, I mean, it, it's a different. Uh atmosphere? Is it something that we have to? Do differently or? I mean, is, i- i- is it like uh where the engineer always has to be? The town hires and then, well. How did Fred come to be with the town? Eric, you might be able to tell me a little bit more about that.
Uh he was there before me, but um it's just, I don't, I don't know how we had him, but he was awesome.
So it was like a, just a, just a longstanding relationship kind of?
Yeah, 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 basically.
So is it something that we need to um adjust on our end and not to expect? That kind of service that Fred uh provided?
Yeah, I think this is really kind of the delta between someone who's exceeding expectations versus something that's kind of falling short of expectations. And that gap is really what's kind of so pronounced, I'm thinking. Um I'm gonna continue reaching out to niche. Both at this point, I'm, I have half a mind to simply drive up there, uh you know. Marathons aside, but uh I've been reaching out several times daily.
What is the process for retaining another engineer? Do we have to go through thirty B or?
Uh, I don't believe so. Um consider, it really depends also on the scope of work. Um is, provided the person that we're seeking out has the credentials, we can set up a fifty-three G and just go that way. I don't think there are any other permissions angles, but I can check with the, with the uh town administrator to make sure that's proper.
Yeah, well, in view of the consistent poor performance, I would start thinking very seriously.
I, I would agree with that.
Fred, if, i- if I'm not wrong, was his own engineer and Nitches uh.
Company, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a collection.
You know, how do we? You can't call one person on a firm to, you know, help us out or whatever it is, but um. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a different situation.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tricky thing. Um I'll be having a conversation with Don once he's back from vacation. Uh likely middle of next week, to see if we can either find someone who's local or if uh. Of a, a company like ACOM or some other very large. Uh uh entity has uh satellite offices nearby. Uh either way, we're gonna continue digging into that. You have experience with ACOMs?
I'm no longer director of project manager.
Very good, uh but still.
I have a quick question, Todd.
Sure.
It, for, for each project, do we have a contract that we sign with niche? Is it, is it a project by project? Or how, how do we agree to pay uh niche?
There are different, there are different um arrangements to these sorts of relationships. Uh for example, where I was previously, we had. E- effectively like a one stop shop. We had our peer reviewer and we had a pretty exclusive relationship with them. Um so any peer review work that we had, they had a standing account, they would simply bill us and we would take funds from that account and pay them via that. Here, it's a little different, where each individual peer reviewer um gets established what's called, it's a peer review funds accounts of. Under Master Law Fifty-three, chapter fifty-three G. Um and from there, the applicant submits funds to uh us, and then I hand it to the finance team, they put it in that fifty-three G account and pay those bills. From that fifty-three G account. Uh so each one is effectively taken uh kind of in a freestanding way. They don't necessarily bleed into each other. So there's several different ways about it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious if we can add some language to, you know, to, to contracts about turnaround time or. About maybe best effort for attending planning board meetings where, um you know, their. Their deliberation is, is requested, you know, if, if there's a way for us to uh, on a project by project basis, include something like that.
That would be a fair question for the uh, uh for the procurement officer, really. That's kind of a different discipline. Uh procuring uh the products and services from municipal funds. I don't have the authorization nor the skill set. To really speak towards the, the purchasing element of things.
But also, the answer is yes.
Yeah, that's the short answer. I just, I don't have the, I don't have the, I don't have the skill set to speak on that in depth, but I'm familiar enough.
Yeah, that sounds like maybe the right mechanism. If, if we don't find a. Somebody else where we can have a good working relationship, long-term working relationship, that might be kind of the mechanism we can employ to make sure. We get reasonable turnaround times. We don't, we're not sitting here waiting week after week, you know?
Agreed, agreed, and uh, you know, it's, it's equally frustrating uh for both the applicant and the staff that are here trying to make sure these applications move through process as they will. Uh so, trust me, it's uh, it's not exactly fun making fruitless calls over and over again.
Has, have you escalated it within that organization?
Yeah, I've um, so I have three points of contact within niche. I've reached out to all of them. At the tip, Steve Ventreska is usually very, very responsive to me, at least he was earlier on in my tenure here. For whatever reason, he's uh, this kind of tapered off his contact, and I haven't really gotten explanation since.
Alright, something that we have, I guess we have to figure out in the long term.
Agreed, agreed.
Want to keep moving on?
Aye, sir.
Alright, discussion items. Future updates of the uh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we already, we already made the motion to continue the item now. I believe.
Yes, yeah, good, right, yeah.
It's been a long time. Yeah, great. Okay, so um moving on, sir, to discussion items. That brings us up to uh the eighty-one Q provisions for subdivision, within subdivision regulations. Um this would um effectively govern the maintenance plowing of said roadways within. Uh subdivisions that are yet to be accepted or completed, making sure that they are kept to the same maintenance standards as municipal roadways. Of course, this would not be retroactive, but um it's something that would, would require also. Uh us scheduling another public hearing, going to the standard hearing process to amend the town of uh Bolton's subdivision regulations. This is something we can do effectively entirely in-house. It doesn't have to go before. Uh meeting, it doesn't have to go before the voters of Bolton. It's something that can be done uh as a self-contained process, just through the standard public hearing laws. And that's something we can do. I would argue that should have been done ages ago, but it doesn't matter, we can do it now. And it will apply to every subdivision uh application that would go before us uh after its adoption.
Do you have recommended language for that?
I do have recommended language. Um I can, I can um share that with you guys via email. That way, when we go ahead and uh schedule that, that public hearing, we'll have that language effectively ready and raring to go. And then we can go ahead and then uh insert that into the town of Bolton subdivision regulations to make sure that. Some of the issues that have arisen from our problematic and delinquent subdivisions. Um have less likely a chance to reoccur in the future.
So you have Brian Falk review that before we take a look at it?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, this is kind of, I won't call it out of the can, but it's pretty much bog standard. for, uh, Massachusetts municipalities that have adopted, uh, eighty-one Q.
Yeah, but it could become a point of legal contention, so it'd be really good to have that.
Exactly. So I can make sure that we have that. I'll bring that, I'll drop, I'll grab, I'll collect that language and then submit it to Brian Falk for his review. And then hopefully he can send me, uh, a letter containing his thoughts or a paragraph, or maybe even have him drop by, uh, for that public hearing, so we can have a, uh.
And just make sure he has a need date.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know what other towns, uh, do? Like, because I mean, it, it's, it's been kind of shame for the Century Mill folks that they basically had to pay for plowing for the past ten years. You know, like, do other towns, you know, have provisions built in where the, the developers need to take care of that?
Yes, uh, it's, it's quite, it's quite common, um, especially in areas of North Central Mass, kind of where I, I live presently. Also, in the western portion of the state, and also in Middlesex County, it's very common there as well. Um, but I can draft a list of, uh, uh, similar communities to Bolton that are analogous, that have also adopted this. And, uh, I might be able to get some, some testimonials from other planning staff that support area towns too.
I mean, it could almost like another incentive for the developer to get the project done, you know?
Exactly. It's, it's the sort of thing that in my conversations with other area planning directors, it's something that is effectively addressed on project onset at point of application. So that way, when they submit their, uh, even their preliminary uh, before detail phase, but their preliminary subdivision requests, um, they have to have reviewed and kind of digested all the rules and regulations that would be attached to that project. So they're effectively acquiescing and acknowledging that this would be expected of from project onset, rather than kind of after the fact, trying to chase them down for for plowing before the roads have season for a year, for example. Uh, this is something that is it, it's something that it's, I'm surprised hasn't been adopted already, but it's something that we can rectify now, so I suggest we do that.
So the other issues that I know residents in those communities have, uh, is mail, which they're all still going to the post office to get them out. I mean, is there any way to force the developer to put, you know, some box out front, or is that a federal, is that some issue that they can't do that?
I don't, I don't think we have the teeth to do that, because that's still, uh, it's still privately owned in that sense.
Yeah, that's a federal.
It's an, it's an active construction site in a legal sense, until those roads have been publicly accepted. Uh, it's still, despite how pretty and well, as well constructed as it appears to be, legally speaking, it's still an active construction site.
Well, what I'm saying is.
Can't regulate the federal, can't regulate federal mail.
We can't have them put a box out front on the main road or something?
We don't have the teeth to do that.
Um, yeah, and then the other issue is bus stops, like, like, you know, having a safe spot at the front of the subdivision for a bus to stop, stuff, you know, something like that.
Yeah, given that the subdivision is still a private roadway, I'm not familiar enough with exactly how the bus stop works and have to dig into that a bit more. I'm sure there's statute that covers it. I'm just not familiar with that one particular wicked.
But the, the entryway to the, uh, development of, uh, I guess intersects a public road, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, well, then, what, I guess, I, I don't understand the issue with the, with the, uh, with the bus stop. Because buses stop at, you know, at the intersection of private roads and public, public roads all the time, right?
Yeah.
It, it may be, it may be a school, it may be a school issue. It might be their policy.
Well, sometimes like, there's like, a bigger group of kids, so it would be nice to have like, an area on the side cleared or something. I, I know, I just know it's come up before.
Yeah, and their safety should be paramount, so, uh, maybe we can get some from, someone from NRSD to speak.
Yeah, let's not speculate. Let's go to the superintendent's office and ask.
I'll bring the battering ram.
Um, just ask.
But, but, I, 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 I do think that the snow plowing is a good stick to hold over the developer.
It's, if nothing else, it provides a legal framework for if let's, hopefully, nothing like this ever happens again, but at least then legally, we'll have the ability to say at project onset, the applicant was well aware due to this provision cited here that they must have read and understood before moving along in the process. We're bereft of that right now. Um, for whichever reason, but at least we'll have that additional kind of tool in our toolbox, uh, going forward, if anything like this were to ever happen again. That's the most we really do.
So the other thing on subdivision rules and regs, um, maybe this is out of the scope of what you want to talk about, but, um, was, you know, clear-cutting and incentivizing not clear-cutting by maybe taking away, you know, because we require shade trees along the road. Every, every so many feet, so if they save some trees or something, if we could somehow, you know, replace shade trees with, you know, mature trees, you know, just any way we could save mature trees and the development, you know? Versus, like, like a mature tree versus whatever we require, three-inch or four-inch, you know, diameter is not I don't even know, was it, Bob could probably say is maybe ten percent of a twelve-inch to fifteen-inch, you know, tree based on the canopy, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we have all the scientific basis for that, and it has been done elsewhere. Um, and to your point, Eric, if you're knocking down a big tree, um, when you take a look at the shade implications, not to mention the carbon secrastation, um, it's a huge, huge difference. And if we can base whatever we're doing on other approaches that have been used by other towns, approved by the state, and then base it on scientific information, I think we're in very good shape, but if God, if you can do a little bit of research on the approach that's been used and the rationale behind it, um, that would be very useful.
Absolutely. Got it.
That's a good point, Eric. I mean, I think we are going to be faced with that as we get into subdivisions that go into more difficult terrain.
Yes, and, uh, especially Bob, you and I have had many conversations. We're at a point now within Bolton's development process where the simplest and most streamlined parcels to build upon are becoming increasingly lower in inventory, and they're harder and harder to find. Um, so we're more than likely going to be encountering more problematic and troublesome parcels as time moves on. Uh, as developers kind of look to get a bit more creative in, uh, in their desired process, but with that in mind, um, I will come up with a few other, uh, points of improvement within, uh, the town of Bolton subdivision rules and regs. Uh, each one of those would, uh, need to be done individually, but I would like to see, uh, at least the eighty-one Q provision being done in relatively short order, keep giving, given that it still has to go through public hearing process. That's very low-hanging fruit. That's something that we should be able to, to get done relatively quickly.
Do you, let me ask one other, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, do, do you have to do them all differently, or can we just have an, a hearing for updating all this?
The cleanest, the cleanest way would be to do these differently. We can still hold all of them on the same day. We can do that. But you can't do these amendments, uh, as cleanly as a class. They need to be done individually. So, uh, we can still hold them all on the same day. That's really not a worry. Uh, it's just a matter of keeping things kind of peas and carrots separate. The process is cleaner to keep them individually.
One other thing, and it's associated with our experience on Meadow Road. I think we've got to rethink the information that is required uh, for a driveway permit, an application for a driveway permit. Um, if we had known in the very beginning, um, what the implications would have been for drainage. Um, and knowing that it's not simply a ten percent grade within fifty feet of the town taking, but it's the whole issue of drainage, and where does that drainage come from? Um, and it's the, the cart before the horse. If we approve a driveway and then suddenly discover that we have Niagara Falls slightly behind it, we really, we've really got to think that through. And driveway permits are not, in my mind, an administrative sign-off by departments. Um, they require thorough look, an understanding of what the implications are to that driveway and its implications to stone walls, trees, and most, you know, at the moment, most importantly, um, drainage and potential icing and so forth on the town road, but I'm not willing to accept somebody at this point simply saying, yeah, it's, you know, we've met the requirements. Um, I want to see, I want to show me. Um, tell me how you've met the requirements and tell me what the implications upstream um, to whatever you're proposing are, and how you're going to mitigate that. Um, we would have, I think if we had seen that in the beginning with the three A and R lots that we're looking at Meadow Road, we would have gotten some heads together um, to talk about better solutions from the town perspective, better solutions from an environmental perspective, and probably more saleable lots in development. Um, I think that would have definitely happened. Uh, not going into a subdivision approach, but simply having a conversation about the implications of doing.
I mean, there are iterations that are effectively neighborhood-centric, but not technically subdivisions. Uh, those clusters, that iteration of cluster development would likely work, but it requires a bit of, uh, collegiality between neighbors. And that's having them, ex- exactly. It requires a little bit more, I hate to say grassroots, but it requires a bit more hand and glove with neighbor to neighbor and coming up with the best possible solution.
Yeah, well, not doing it turned into a real cluster.
I, well said. I appreciate that. Um, but, so there are iterations, there are there are, uh, folks that have, you know, need to reinvent the wheel. We can find effective iterations elsewhere and then tailor it to fit Bolton's unique unique topography in mind especially. Um, there are iterations out there, but it does require a bit more of a, of a get-to-know-your-neighbors approach and actually working together with folks that you might not quite know yet.
Well, can we get back to specifics on the driveway permit? I would be interested if everybody on this call would take a look at the, the driveway permit application and be able to make recommendations. And we can have deliberations on those recommendations in a subsequent meeting. Um, and that's something that I'm not sure, um, whether it would require anything more than a hearing. It's to the best of my knowledge, it's not changing the town bylaw. It's changing the information required in the application.
Yeah, that there, I'd have to take a look again. It, it's not, uh, it's not amending an existing bylaw, so it wouldn't need to go before town. Uh, that's something that would be, uh, analogous to a subdivision reg. It's something in-house that we can be done here, provided it has a public hearing satisfaction.
Okay, that's, that's my recommendation for near-term action.
One more thing, because we don't have enough things. I would like to see the, uh, the fee schedule, uh, kind of adjusted with, uh, to reflect increasing costs. Um, this is just something, uh, that kind of I came to the front of my mind just the last fifteen minutes or so. And just, we started talking about public hearings that made me think of certified mailings, and realizing for these certified mailings, we only charge six bucks per each, uh, certified a butter when it costs nine to eleven dollars, uh, for each individual certified mailing through the post office. Doesn't sound like much, but when you're doing a lot of them, that volume will add up. And if it's just a matter of keeping abreast with rising costs, so it's something we should look at, uh, in the medium term. Doesn't need to be done right now, but it needs to be done effectively, just to keep treading water with cost.
That doesn't sound like there's administrative labor included in that number.
No. I'm, I'm, I am not nearly that special, nor do I, I volunteer a lot, but I don't work for free.
I wouldn't.
I mean, I would work for free if it's like designing housing policy, but not stuffing envelopes. Sorry, no.
Okay.
That's something to, something to keep on the, on the medium term.
All right, good, good. So, um, all right, so do we, we need to make any motions on discussion items?
Uh, no, so we don't, because really, if we're going to be deliberate, we can deliberate or just talk about things without uh, notice or hearing, but once actually getting to that decision-making time, um, that's when we need to have, you know, public meetings satisfied, so we need to have two weeks' notice and all that fun stuff. But we can talk about these things all day until the day is long, but I think we're all set.
Well, let's move on to other business.
That it? That's it.
All right, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, seconded.
All right, see. All right, so let's go ahead and, uh, take a little call. I'll begin with James Barr, because this was his idea.
I'm just going by what's there.
Is that an affirmative, sir?
Aye.
All right, let's go with Eric.
All right.
Right, and, uh, Austin?
Aye.
And, uh, Bob?
Aye.
Mike, you want to get on this too?
Aye.
All right, very good. Bob President, the affirmative. Take care, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Nothing like unanimity.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.